Let's go, Army. Right, we will make a start. Worry. Hello and welcome. Good to have you with us. We have a number of apologies for this evening's meeting from councillor Nixie, councillor Alban, councillor Rezeki, councillor Linda Piper and councillor Stuart Piper. Does anybody else have any apologies to pass on? Right, okay, we do know that there are a couple of other members who are hoping to join us coming straight from work, so hopefully they will come in very shortly. We're delighted also to have with us Cheryl Vuller from our Active Ramsgate programme, who is with us online. Hello Cheryl. Right, so we've got quite a large agenda this evening, so without wishing to limit discussion, we need to sort of try to crack on, otherwise we'll all still be here at midnight, so we're all all right with that. Okay, declarations of interest? Any declarations of interest? I need to declare that I'm a member of the town team, but I don't think there's actually a town team report on this agenda. Pat, you are as well, aren't you? That Pat. Anybody else? Okay, minutes of the last town promotion meeting, which was held on the 1st of September. Has everybody had a chance to have a look at those minutes? And are they an accurate record?
I just read them and they seemed...
Okay, great, thank you. So can, we have a proposal to accept? Right, so proposed by councillor Green and seconded by councillor Britton, and thank you. Is everybody happy with that?
Carriage.
Yes, yes, approve the minutes, yes. Lovely, thank you. Okay, our next item is our item on Active Ramsgate. And for an update of the programme, I'd like to hand over to Cheryl. I think the town clerk has picked up on that, Cheryl, and I think we may have some good news on that coming through, but we'll talk to you separately about that if we may. Thanks very much, David.
Impressive, impressive progress, Cheryl. Thank you for that. The triathlon and the triathlon, do they require TDC's permission to operate? And if so, have we got it? Do they require TDC's permission in order to operate them? And if so, have we got it? Thank you.
And councillor Megaton.
My sister took part in a triathlon that was teams. It had to be one woman at least, and there were mainly two men and one women, and they were all shortened bits as a sort of tester. It's a bit of a test to do. To have teams.
A team, a team approach rather than an individual one.
I think they all did, all the three things, but the winning team would sort of combine when they...
So. Have you got a specific plan for how the triathlon testers will work, Cheryl, or are you still exploring options?
Association.
Come to Ramsgate and have fun, rather than come to Ramsgate and do a serious sport. Yeah. Yep, 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 makes sense. Any other questions or comments that anybody's got, Cheryl?
You have a question?
Yeah, Cheryl said you have distributed so many leaflets, so how do you distribute them? Yeah.
What geographical area does the first lot of marketing cover, Cheryl? Brilliant, thank you. Councillor Green.
The new engineered website, do we know how it's performing yet? Do we know how the new engineered website is performing yet? Do we have any? Yes, yes.
Great, thank you. Councillor Alban.
Is it possible to have some leaflet at these stations in London, like Victoria, Carrick Cross and King's Cross and Trafalgar, places like this, I think we need to be there as well.
Rebecca. Unlimited budget, yeah. Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Rebecca, was there anything you wanted to add at all on that? No? Okay, that's fine. We'll come back to it tomorrow and then we'll report at the next meeting. Are we all okay with that item? Right, brilliant, thank you very much, Cheryl. Thank you. Bye. Okay, moving on, our next item is the visitor information centre update, so that is over to you Rebecca.
Yes, well, we've had some interesting meetings. One lady who does the walk and talk boards, she's had a couple of shadowy mornings. She's really excited and full of enthusiasm, has a lot of great ideas.
That's the kind of person we want.
You know, linking with the station and all of that sort of thing. Some art display boards, linking all history with artists like Goff, Tissot, who's had a history here. So yeah, I think that would be good. And this week I've had a couple more come through, gentlemen and ladies, I've sent them back information and I'm waiting to hear on how that's going. And then another lady is shadowing Kerry tomorrow. So we've got...
That's looking very promising then, isn't it? Great.
And also lovely, Annie's back.
Is back, yes.
So she's started...
And she's been a mainstay, hasn't she? Brilliant.
And of course we're going to work with Dean and a... We're looking at putting on a volunteer...
A volunteer day, yeah.
In February, where lots of local charities, voluntary organisations, garden groups etc. Can hopefully come along and entice new blood into their organisation.
Brilliant, and that will be at Radcliffe House then?
That will be at Radcliffe House, yes.
Excellent, that sounds great. Any questions for, on that report? Councillor Green.
I just wanted to pick up on the offer to do, to do town at the station, I think that's a great idea. I think we've got a stand, haven't we?
We have had a stand, but it is vandalised every 10 minutes. Chris has spent a lot of his time repairing it.
But even with a volunteer.
But with a volunteer there, we're hoping that it may work differently.
Obviously the volunteer will only be there for a few hours now. That tends to, that gets vandalised generally in the early evenings, late afternoons. And we're considering, we've got a new contact now, so we're starting to communicate again with the station. And the hope is that we can use that old, years ago, it was a little WHS next. So that, as far as we know from a meeting we had several years ago.
Time ago now.
It's just been a small space, so there's no reason why we couldn't utilise it to the benefit of...
Just as a counter for somebody to...
We need to learn the best time to be there, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, so it'll be working with them.
Yeah, it's a brilliant idea, having somebody who wants to be there anyway. Cassia.
Would it be any better if we had it fixed on a wall? Where people walk past.
We have it.
Because it scans, doesn't it, just inside the door?
Oh, are we talking about two different things, I think, aren't we?
Yeah, so that's the visit, this Fanic sandwich board you're talking about, I believe. We've got a display board, it's exactly the same as what that says.
With slots.
That is what's, unfortunately the dividers have been pulled out, thrown out, and the perspex have all gone now, so it's a bare shadow of its former style, not fit for purpose. But no, there's a little kiosk almost opposite if you come up the steps to the main foyer.
Next door to cafe entrance.
Yeah, it's closed, you kind of miss it, but it is, there's an opportunity there to have a little kiosk and that's what we want to talk to the station about.
Could be really excellent. Councillor Green.
It's a notice board outside, I think it looks, it's inside.
If you're, again, looking at the outside, it's the left and stores, it's just to the left of them.
So that all sounds quite promising, well done. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Oh, sorry councillor Hesington.
I just want to say I think it's a brilliant idea, the volunteer kind of exhibition where everybody could come along and talk to different volunteer groups, or we can kind of do some of the groups.
Excellent. Excellent, Cassia.
I just wondered, would it be possible during more touristic times, you know, Easter and so on, to have something on the buses, some sort of little leaflet? You know, where people get on the bus and there's nothing to do, so they take a leaflet and have a read? Local information?
I've just started a conversation with Visit Fanic with regards to the lack of Stagecoach timetables, physical timetables, because it is probably the most frequent inquiry downstairs from the volunteers. And there's a possibility once we, they're interested as well, they agree that we need to have more timetables to give out to our visitors. And maybe that we can start that conversation as a partnership with Stagecoach and include the idea of having leaflets. A small dispenser on the buses.
If people got confused with the topless bus, didn't they? You know, the times were changed and that would be good. So they're there to have information.
Yep.
I think they're leaning towards the app, which isn't suitable for everybody.
For everybody, no.
Or when people are on holiday, they're not backing on just continually downloading new maps, they'd rather have a physical map that's sitting around.
Yes.
Relaxing.
Yep, yep. Great, that's all, sounds very promising, thank you. So we are asked to note the information and approve the work as proposed at Ramsgate Station. All those in favour?
Second.
Oh, I needed a second, I needed a second. You second please councillor Young, thank you. Second, right, all those in favour? Thank you. Okay, moving on to town promoter update then, Rebecca, please, if you don't mind.
So hopefully, I've had a read of my report and updates. Lots of pretty pictures, and now how much you like my...
Indeed.
I just wanted to make a point of thanking Sylvia Russell's work she does with the app, with the maps. And you'll see that they've now exceeded 100,000 views, that's really good. And that's, she, she is passionate about these maps. In fact, Fanic Council has said in the report we listen to services to create a Fanic, Fanic final best map. It's not easy to say on another list. And they've now, their new campaign, which is shop and eat local this Christmas. And she's, so she's done amazing work on there and they're often thinking about new maps that really interest visitors. As you'll see, there's a few ambitions in the report. On the subject of maps, we haven't had a new visitors' map created in Ramsgate for some time. It is often, I know at the moment we're sort of printing some ourselves of an old version, but I wonder if it would be a good idea to look at having a new spoke Ramsgate visitors' map created by one of our talented local designers possibly. I know that a recent meeting with the Wooding, with the Alton Street trainers again, that idea of having a physical map is, it can considerably be really important. So I would like to pursue that idea. We were hoping it might be included in Wellcome Back funding, but unfortunately it hasn't been, so I'd like to pursue, get an idea of costs without it possible.
So can we ask you to take that away and sit and come back? Yes? Okay, so are there any other, any questions or comments that people want to make on the town promoter report? Councillor Green. Councillor Green.
I'd just like to ask about the grant funding updates. To me, I mean, there's a number of them and they're extremely important for the town. But they all seem to be going ahead without any consultation or input from the town council. And I don't know what we can do about it other than continuing to ask TDC why that is. I noted at the, when we had the meeting with the MP, he said that he was going to chair the London Up Committee that's going to be formed and that Ramsgate Town Council was having a seat. Now that would be a huge step forward. But could I ask particularly about the Wellcome Back funding? Some of which should surely benefit Ramsgate, but we have no idea what that might, that might be, or what TDC intend to do. You, do you know anything?
Town clerk.
Town clerk. So the list of ideas that the town council approved was forwarded to TDC and unfortunately in nearly all of the places they wrote back and said, these are not things that the fund is eligible to spend money on. The main crux seemed to be that the fund must be for things that are always temporary and reach. And so if we asked for benches, they said, well, the problem is, what's going to happen, the benches can't stay, you can only have them for a bit and then they have to go away. Or they have to be disposed of. I did ask TDC, well, all these things, could they be used for the Wellcome Back fund for the required period and then gifted to Ramsgate Town Council for us to repurpose and continue to use? Haven't had an answer to that question. We've now received a breakdown of the headings that the funding is going to be used on. And I'll forward it to members. Rebecca might have a better idea than I, but it's, those headings really didn't give much away as to what was included. For example, there's about £11,000 being allocated for Christmas trees and decorations in certain places. But I was at a meeting with Gavin Waite yesterday, where myself and all the other parish representatives present were saying, oh, we need these, we need Christmas decorations yesterday.
Yes.
Making the, making the decision last week and there being a long procurement. Whatever the, the process is, we don't want Christmas trees and decorations turning up on Christmas Eve.
February.
Um, and, and as such, some of the places that were hoping to get a tree or decorations are now funding their own because it's, uh, they were worried that, that the process was too slow with the welcome.
I do appreciate that the government has been, has really dragged its heels on this, but it does appear that TDC offices have dragged their feet as well and, and it's not really very helpful. And the fact that none of us who are both TDC and RTC councillors have been involved in any of these discussions at all is very disappointing.
And I know that Rebecca's come up with other last minute ideas to try and put something successful in the mix. I think unfortunately our interpretation of the guidance is, is different to TDC's.
I'm still really puzzled by why things have to be temporary in view of the fact that this fund is supposed to be taking over from the E R D F funding, which was specifically about things that were solid and capital and lasted. It seems to be completely backwards, but there we go. Um, councillor Wing, sorry councillor Green, I think was first.
The top of our list was street entertainment. Now that's.
Very temporary.
Pretty temporary, yeah.
We need it for, for, uh, uh, restructured Christmas.
Event on Sunday.
Have we got it?
Uh, so there, there will be entertainment out of Ramsgate Town Council's Christmas fund. Uh, TDC, um, came back to say that no singular events would be supported by the welcome back.
Councillor Wing.
I think, uh, uh, those of us with double hats need to, uh, send emails out who, uh, to the appropriate yeah, TDC officer to find out exactly what temporary funding, what temporary things this funding is being spent on because it
Perhaps.
it doesn't seem to me as if a, a great deal of money is actually getting to where it's actually needed. So I think we need to politely ask the question of, uh, Gavin, let me just go back to the town clerk.
Um, uh, one element that I do remember off the top of my head, I think it's about thirty five thousand pounds is going to be spent on deep cleaning. Fanat.
But we do of course have a, a minute from, uh, a council meeting which, um, Dean has helpfully found for us that says that we have an agreement that it's an annual deep clean, which no current officers in the waste or operational services team know anything about. And I'm chasing that still. So, you know, I, I think we're, we're, we should be in credit as it were, as far as that's concerned. Councillor.
So, uh, following on from the deep cleaning, may I suggest that Ramsgate Town Council sends a list of areas that we want deep cleaning using this thirty five thousand, including the car park, our streets, the phone boxes.
Shelters?
I think.
Start with TDC officers.
Might I suggest that I liaise with the town clerk as chair of this committee and that I send a follow-up email to the town clerks and copy in all those double hatted councillors who should have been involved in this discussion at an earlier stage. And we'll see what goes from there. Are people happy with that? Yes? I think, our councillor Young.
Yeah, I have asked if the shelters can be, um, cleaned.
Cleaned.
Because they are so foul, where people use them as urinals and trucks and.
Yes.
Everything else.
Yes, indeed.
I'd just like to, uh, make a comment about Ramsgate in Bloom. I, I, it's the second year, I think. And one of the people we need to give a great deal of credit for, who I don't think really is acknowledged is PCSO John Lichfield, because he's the whole thing. Uh, and I think we, and he constantly sends me emails reminding me of what I've got to do. And I did go to help, I did go to Sandwich, which is great because otherwise you forget. So he's there pushing us all the time, always coming up with positive ideas on how to improve our town. So I don't know whether we send him some sort of thank you.
I'd be very happy to do that from this group if that's okay.
But also, I think we lost our way a bit last year. I mean, I was throwing plants out on Addington Street. We got, uh, improving level one or level two, I can't remember what it is, but it does make a massive difference to the community. And I have been to Sandwich and noticed they've, they've got winter plants out which are looking great. So is it something we can, as a, as a, as a whole, as a, as a, across Ramsgate, I'd like to see it spread out. And in fact, David, I've sent you an email about one of the, I think a resident on your, uh, in your ward sends to you and uh, he wants to do something with the middle bits, but I'm not quite sure who they belong to. But I, I think where we've got residents that are prepared to do stuff, we need to try and support them as much as possible. Maybe, maybe, maybe we need to allocate, uh, some funding next year to help establish. That's all I'm saying, because it is great to see flowers all over the place.
They indeed fit in nicely with councillor Green's previous suggestion about our being rather more active in procuring projects. And maybe Ramsgate in Bloom is something we could do with having a further discussion about at our next meeting with a view to perhaps encouraging applications from community groups and individuals, neighbours and so on in, in parts of the town that haven't yet been represented under that fund. Councillor asks.
Yeah, um, okay, I understand that, uh, TDC has got some funding for deep cleaning. But before Ramsgate Town Council also used to do some deep cleaning in the town centre like Harbour Street and, uh, part of the town centre. And I don't know if that can be carried out, you know, on a regular basis in a fixed time. Uh, you know, like Easter, uh, summer, Christmas, you know, in three quarterly or something like that. If that's possible, I think that should be something we should think about because otherwise if TDC just does it once a year, it's no good.
It's no good at all.
Need a fixed time that, you know, we don't, we don't want to hear that, oh, we couldn't do it because the machine wasn't, uh, uh, working. Or we couldn't do it because the technicians were not available. But we should have some fixed time for this. And also like planting as well, uh, you know, the, the hanging baskets. I think the hanging basket needs to be changed. The way it has been done is no use. It goes up very high and the, but the baskets are very big. They, they never flower. You hardly see them anywhere. But if you look at Canterbury and other places, even in Brosters, they do it completely different. And these are the, these are the things I think we should have a fixed time, that they should go up on certain date. There's no excuse that they, they, we need a fixed date for all these items, I think.
Can we ask the town clerk to take those points away and discuss them with the technician team?
I don't, I don't agree about the cleaning. TDC should do the cleaning. They take out council tax. It's one of their jobs. They should do it.
I think we need both, actually.
If TDC does it once a year, uh, I'd be inclined to say it's no use.
Councillor Wing.
Following on from that, I remember being in a meeting about the welcome back funding where it was discussed that actually that the parish council could undertake, undertake some of the work and then bill TDC for the money back. And I think we should be pursuing this, some of this thirty five K where we have control over our cleaning, because it's much better if we've got control of it than waiting for TDC to come and do a street that doesn't need cleaning. Uh, and we pursue, we pursue, again, we work out what we want cleaned. And we, and we approach TDC to say, our team will undertake the cleaning at a cost from the welcome up. And it is something that is going to be temporary. Uh, so I think that maybe that's a way of recycling some of the money back and, 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 and getting, yeah. And getting, getting what we need cleaned, cleaned.
Yeah, but we, we have a debt, debt wash machine, don't we?
We do, yes.
Yeah, but if, if, if that's not, you know, ideal one at the moment, maybe we should invest on it and have a proper one for the future.
Yeah, I think this is, these are things we need to come back to, aren't they? Um, certainly in terms of the, um, of the town council picking up duties from uh, from Thanet District Council, it's something that I proposed at cabinet last week when they looked at the budget, which is dire for the next couple of years, that active efforts should be made to engage with town and parish councils with a view to uh, a better management of things like waste and cleansing services. Um, and to look at what the options are because there are different models. For example, Westgate does things differently from Ramsgate and whatever. Sorry councillor Moore.
I may be mistaken, but maybe you remember this, David. Didn't we buy a cleaning machine?
We have got one. It belongs, it belongs to the town team, doesn't it? Does the town team pay for it? Yeah?
The town team paid for it and gifted it to the town council.
Machine that we bought at Peter Campbell's instigation and it worked for a while and then I seem to think it disappeared to Margate and we haven't seen it since.
No.
I could be wrong.
I think, Rebecca?
Rebecca just. Um, it was when town team first started in, what, twenty fourteen, the first thing we did was we purchased a relatively small, um, steam cleaning, pressure cleaning washer. And what the town council did was they graciously accepted the gift and then they brought a large bowser. Um, and I believe a trailer so that it could be transported and utilised um, more efficiently. But it, it was found to be quite lacking in, in the time it took, um, as councillor Arora said, it's probably worth looking at an upgrade that would be much more efficient for the technicians to, to use and make more of an impact if, if you decide to go down that route.
Was it for the town centre bit?
Not, not necessarily, no, no.
Town clerk?
Uh, this tied in with, um, uh, possible uses for the milk float. Because, um, Chris was looking at whether one of those could be adapted to have, um, a pressure washer on it. Um, he's assured me that in, um, in the new year, he will crack on with the, the, um, uh, the health and safety work that was required. He's going to get, get staff using those again.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else on this report? Councillor Green.
Moving on from cleaning, I'd like to inquire about the Charlotte Court market. Some months ago now, we, we agreed that we wanted to go ahead with it. Um, I don't think it's happening, anything's happening. Um, I see in the report that although we put five thousand pounds aside for the marquees, the town promoter is saying that they're probably not the best thing that we could spend the money on. And more expensive marquees, somewhere between ten and sixteen thousand are required. Um, first of all, why have it happened when we said it should and we put the money aside? But B, how do people feel about putting more money into it?
Town clerk?
Uh, may I clarify that? And, and Dean will, um, please, please correct me if I'm wrong, but although five thousand pounds for the marquees was mentioned in a meeting, it wasn't actually a resolution that was voted on and is not in the budget. Um, so Rebecca was going to bring forward a, a detailed posting proposal to, to, to get this confirmed. Uh, with regard to, um, a market, Rebecca can possibly give an update. We have the idea of having a, uh, to, to begin with a trial market that coincided with, um, late night shopping. Uh, so that, with the intention that if we have one or two markets to see what the logistical issues are, see how well things run. But am I right in thinking the, the idea of having something that comes out of the late night shopping is falling down because of, um, the lighting?
No, we, we are, we are going to head with it, we are going ahead with the trial um, on the ninth of December. So it will coincide with the late night shopping. So we have at the moment, seven market stalls have booked for that evening. And we will use the existing stores for that. So, um, that will be our first trial. But, um, it's, yeah, it's not, it's not been an easy time to try and get some market operators to market traders rather to come and, and try it. But this is an ideal opportunity because it's working with the other small businesses that are resuming for that evening. So there's, um, twelve of them in total. And then one of the numbers on, on the late night shopping trail that I've created. Hey, the number five is the market. And, and that's, there's going to be a choir there as well. Um, and we will have extra lights here. We've got some temporary, temporary lights, there I mentioned the word temporary lights. Um, over the mark, going over the stalls and we've got one for the bushes. And obviously we have the festival lighting there as well. But lighting is something I wanted to talk about in term for the Rio. So I want, if I can talk about that in a minute, that would be good. Um, but yeah, so it's, it's just, it, it, it was decided that the ninth, doing a trial then would be the best idea, councillor Green.
Okay, um, councillor Crittenden then councillor Wing, and then we'll come back to the issue about lighting.
I just wanted to comment in relation to markets that, um, picking up a little on what was being said earlier, that there appear to be decisions being made, um, at TDC, which haven't been involving RTC up until now.
Goodness.
And you know, uh, because I've copied you in on my emails, um, and we now have our town clerk trying to help us arrange a meeting so that we are actually talking to, um, TDC. But they are, the conversations at TDC appear to be including, um, not only uh, the main market, but whether or not it's going to be replaced or alongside this kind of market that we've just been talking about here. So I just thought it was worth mentioning at this point under markets, um, the the current situation.
Seems to be a bit of a blurry.
Yeah, we, we'd like to talk to the officers at, at TDC and they seem to be not talking to us on this subject at the moment.
Councillor Pugh, when he came to give his update, uh, did talk about having the main market going originally by Christmas. And now we're talking about by Easter.
Well, I know.
Twenty twenty two. Once again, it's slipping.
Yeah.
But also I think there's a bit of lack of clarity there about what, what's covered, what's within scope for Thanet District Council to contract.
For. They're having discussions with, without actually coming to the people, particularly in thinking of our town promoter, who has such a wealth of knowledge and experience to, that could feed into
Exactly.
uh, what TDC are discussing, uh, as well as the rest of us. Um, so just want, I just wanted to add that mate so it could be noted.
Thank you.
The situation.
Thank you. Councillor Wing.
I, I, I mean, I think Rebecca's done really well to actually get a market off the ground this time of year because I know we tried to do one on Addington Street and ended up cancelling it because of weather conditions. So I think you need a massive pat on the back actually.
Yeah.
Also, I, I think there are other stakeholders that know a great deal about running markets, uh, myself included because of the revival fair, that, that should be engaged, that TDC should talk to.
And Addington Street.
Yeah. Uh, I, I've talked to Janice and Handmade, Susie, Susie Humphries. There are a wealth of people who, who can have an imp.
And can advise.
What's best for our town.
Indeed.
So I welcome that engagement with TDC.
Which one? Councillor Green.
So following the trial, I don't want to, want this just to disappear into the ether. Following the trial, could we ask the town clerk to come forward with a definite proposal of how we take the market for and what funding is needed?
And at that point, we will hopefully have clarified with Thanet District Council officers the scope of the market contracts that they are planning on. Letting. Town clerk?
Sorry, the, the, they clarified the proposal that I would be bringing forward is for Charlotte Court.
Yes. Are we all done on this? Town clerk?
Uh, a vote to note, um, the.
Yes, I guess I'm just, uh, uh, um, so can I propose that we note the report and approve the continuing projects that the, uh, town promoter is working on? Can I have a seconda?
Yeah.
Do you guys have a seconda? Seconda? Thank you. All those in favour?
And the, um, the resolution, the motion from councillor Green regarding Charlotte Court Market.
Regarding Charlotte Court Market. Seconda. Need a seconda.
Second.
Councillor Crittenden? All those in favour? Thank you. Okay. Um, next item on the agenda is, add over to you Dean.
Okay. So back in.
So back in September, we, I put the idea to committee about having extra copies funded for the magazine to go to all of Ramsgate. In September, this was agreed in principle to come back to, based on finding out what measurable we can do for the impact of having those extra issues. So having spoken to community ad, there's several different, different ways of measuring the impact. There's four different ways that we've identified that we would be able to measure and they would be able to measure without it being, not, not seen. So first of all is the emails received by community ad. So the amount of emails that they get inquiring about community ads, they can compare for, at the end of next year with this year. So they'll be able to do the comparison of how many residents are inquiring about community ad. So obviously if that's increasing from the areas that it's not being delivered to now, so say Newington and St Moses Montefiore, that is one way of us measuring that impact of the magazine going to those areas. The other one is engaged editorial stories. So obviously as we're pushing it to those areas such as Newington, St Moses, Montefiore, we would expect like Newington Community Centre and like the Newington Lotments Group and all of those areas and community groups to actually write into us with the encouragement from councillors and also adding them to the mailing list.
We did say we were specifically going to go out to those places, weren't we, and ask them, invite them to contribute so we make sure.
So we, we can do a comparison based on the location of those articles and where they've come from. So that's one way that we can measure it, the impact of how successful it's been. Another way, obviously, from community ad's point of view is their revenue through advertising. So the more advertising that they're going to get, they can pinpoint from, what businesses are advertising, the locations and the email addresses of where they're going to be advertising from. So if there's like more businesses from Newington, like the Newington Fish Bar that are advertising in there and it's comparing it to the previous year, we can see if any increases, if whether we've made an impact that way. I know this is very much comparing one year to another, but that's the only way we're going to be able to measure it. And that kind of goes in hand with the magazine pages. So when we first started doing it in twenty thirteen, we had twenty two pages for a magazine. We're now to forty. And that's just for increased, we've gone from fifteen thousand to eighteen thousand. So making this extra two thousand jump could see in the next, next year, an increase in pages that we will have, that we'll be able to push out for the magazine. And obviously this all feeds together with, to links with, if those people in those areas are writing in, then obviously the advertising is going to go up, the more pages, it's just going to grow and develop. But we can all do a comparison report at the end, working with community ad to come out back as how it's impacted.
Thanks, Dean. So what we're saying is that for an additional budget of somewhere between four and four and a half thousand pounds a year, we will actually be able to reach all Ramsgate residents. In my mind, that is a no brainer and something we should have, you know, we should be doing immediately. Are there any questions or comments that anybody wants to make? Is anybody unhappy with that?
Do it, do it for a year.
Yeah, that was, that's the, that is the proposal that we do it for a year. Sorry, did you want to?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to say that some of the residents, when they are taking magazines, they are saying that, you know, some of the articles is very old. They, they get the, you know, the news like after three months, isn't it? So it's, this is what I mean, because everything we write is like after three months, isn't it?
Yes, it's difficult because of the.
Is there any way we can update it on the website?
Magazines are bimonthly, so they're every two months. But I try to get people to weigh in between those periods that they're writing in.
You always get guidance, don't you, about this is, this is going to be going out in this time?
For example, the, the next one is January, February, and we've got people talking about New Year's and around like Valentine's Day and the different offers that they've got. But with regards to that, yeah, when they go on the website, we can definitely update them so they're current. Because obviously the website.
Monthly one, monthly update, you know, from the.
Yeah, on the website, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But once it goes to print, that's kind of.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand.
It is, I, I think there's a sort of bit of skill there, isn't there, in, in guiding people to make sure that what they are, are writing is going to be up to date when, when the people get it through their letterbox. Councillor Young.
I was just wondering if we could get the youth to write a page, perhaps the team leaders or whatever they call them now, prefects in each school, but could they put a little article in about whatever their industry?
Good idea.
That would bring us more up to date, the young people.
That would be helpful. Yes, great. Good idea, councillor Young. Thank you. Councillor Crittenden.
I was just thinking, what Dean was saying, I was just wondering how is it decided what actually goes in there? Is it just like if, if someone writes it, it's accepted or is there any kind of editorial? Who does that?
So we have an editorial working group, which this committee decides when they decide to vote chair, we, we go through that. So I think currently it's councillor Austin, councillor Huxley, councillor Green, town promoter and the staff in the office that do the proofing. So when we receive articles, they're sent to me and then that's all collated. That's all sent out for proofing. And then I won't know what articles are going into the magazine until it's been sent off to community ad due to space. It's then looked at whether they've been in a previous magazine. And if they've been in the last three magazines, I'll try and give it to someone who hasn't. So we try and feature to someone new. So for example, we had the Blend singing group. They've been in every issue for the last year. And we had Age UK who came in, who did a fantastic article promoting something for the new year, actually. So we kind of swapped it out. So it's just based on, and if there's any objections from councillors in the working group, then obviously we debate what's.
Proofing and editorial.
Yeah, yep.
Councillor Huxley.
Who takes the final decision on a controversial article or issue?
So, yeah, so I was going to say, so I normally base it through, through the chair. We try to keep it obviously non-political because it's a town council magazine and any hot potato topics we try to keep out. Obviously recently at previous meetings, it's been made known that councillors to write individual articles of things in their wards. But anything that's like a hot potato or anything like that, that council have not agreed on or have mixed views about, that's kept neutral and cut.
So we don't do an article on Manchester?
We don't do an article on Manchester. We haven't heard any submissions from the British Movement recently.
Thank you.
I was just saying, I think the editorial group should meet sometimes.
Okay.
Because I think it's, you know, there's officers involved in it.
Yep.
There's town part involved in it. There's councillors involved in it. I think we possibly lost the aim of the magazine. What is its aim? Personally, I think it should be reviewed. So is that something we could talk about?
Yeah.
Another meeting.
I think we could have, we could arrange a, a face to face meeting because we've done it all online, partly because of Covid and everything.
I think now maybe we should sit down as a group and talk about the actual aims of it. It's been slightly lost in the history of it. Thanks.
Good idea.
That my Dean card is advertising as well.
Okay, right. Can I propose then that we go ahead, that we thank Dean for his report and that we go ahead with the proposal to extend the magazine's circulation for one year and that we monitor how that goes and come back. Seconded, councillor Crittenden. All those in favour? Thank you. Okay, we have now reached the point in the meeting where we're moving on to confidential matters. So I now need to propose that we exclude the press and public and that we close the live stream. Can I have a second up for that proposal, please? Councillor Ara. Sorry about this.